Alright. Oh, thank you. So, that's Pentecost. When we talk about Pentecost, our mind goes to the charismatic people, the charismatic movement, the Pentecostal movement and all of that. Alright? But, nothing to do with that. Go back to the word. Penteh means fifty. Fifty. He said, "Was fully come." When the day of Pentecost was fully come. Because the Pentecost is a celebration. One of the Jewish celebrations after the Passover. So after the Passover, they will count seven Sabbaths. That is seven-sabbaths. Seven Sabbaths, seven-seven. You know? And the last seven, that is the 50th day. So they celebrate this Pentecost. But God chose this day as a symbol of the coming of the Holy Spirit. He chose this day. The coming of the Holy Spirit, the fulfillment of the prophecy of the Holy Spirit to come upon all flesh. Joel chapter 2 from verse 28. You know, "to fill the believers." To fill the believers. So, Pentecost just means fifty. That's all. But what happened during that day that is important? That the Holy Spirit came. And there is a sign. When He came, He said, "When the day of Pentecost was fully come, they were all with one accord in one place." That is a very important message. They were with... All with one accord in one place. One accord. They were in unity. I mentioned this in the IPW. That is what happened when we gathered together. We worship together and we pray together. Our hearts, you know, every part of us, we are being knit together. You know, like a woman who do knitting. You know, you're being knitted together like a fabric. Being knit together and become one piece of fabric. So you're being united. That is what happened in prayer. That's why we need to gather together. We need to pray together. We need to worship together. That is what will happen. Alright? That is what prayer and worship will do when people gather together. You will be moving. So imagine here, they've been gathering here for 50 days praying, worshiping, waiting with one accord. So every time they pray and worship every day, they become more and more united. They become more and more in unity. Become one accord in one place. Then, in verse 2, it says, "Suddenly..." So our job is to just pray and worship faithfully gathering. Faithfully gathering. There was a story about a revival that happened in the North Pole. In the North Pole. There's a small church there which became discouraged because people are, you know, in the North Pole, there's a lot of problem because it's snow and cold. So people drink wine to keep them heated up, keep warm. Alright? So because of that, many become drunkards. And because there are many become drunkards, households are affected. Husbands become violent and, you know, beat their wives and all. And there's a lot of family troubles and all. And people just drunk and walking on the roadside and all. There's a lot of problem in that place. So they don't go to church. The church, they become very small and the pastor would discourage. So, but they continue the prayer meeting. But what happened was because they become small, so in the prayer meeting also, they drag their feet to come. And when the prayer meeting also, they feel so, you know, like giving up, like, "Just pray, pray lah." You know? So they almost give up. It said, "There is one night, only a few of them." I think four or five people only. With a pastor, the wife, you know? Five people only. But that night, in the point of giving up, they decided to continue on. And it start to happen with the wife of the pastor. Because they keep on praying like that and the Holy Spirit just begin to move with the wife of the pastor first. And it spread, it spread, spread. And somehow, the Holy Spirit came and visited them. So filled them and affected them. And then that affect the community. You know, revival broke in that North Pole church. And the presence of God was so strong. They even recorded one of the worship that, like angels joining them in the worship. And the sound system was like being taken over by the sound of this angel. And the sound man like, you know, "This is not us." You know, he tried to adjust the sound and all. He said, "Where is this sound coming?" So they even turned down, it was in the video. They even turned down all the volume of the microphone, but the sound was still there, was very loud. The worship and all. Angels who were worshiping with them. That is what happened when we continued to pray. The Lord will unite us to become one accord. There was a sign. Suddenly, there came a sound from heaven as of a rushing mighty wind. And it filled all the house where they were sitting. And there appeared unto them coven tongues like as of fire, and it set upon each of them. And they were all filled with the Holy Ghost and began to speak with other tongues as the Spirit gave them utterance. You know, Zephaniah chapter 3 verse 9. God prophesied that He will restore pure language to His people. Pure language. And many Bible teachers and Bible scholars says that, that Zephaniah chapter 3 verse 9 also is a prophecy of the coming of this spiritual language which happened in Acts chapter 2. It was a fulfillment. You remember Zephaniah? You can read that if you want. You can go there if you want. Zephaniah chapter 3 verse 9. He said, "For then I will turn the people..." "I will turn to the people a pure language that they may all, that they may all call upon the name of the Lord to serve Him with one consent." In other translation, he said, "For then I will restore to the people a pure language that they may call upon the name of the Lord to serve Him with one accord." I'm reading from the King James. But the other translation, New King James and other translation says, "God will restore." Now, he didn't say, "He will give a new language," right? If you read it carefully. He did not say, "He will give a new language," but he said, "He will restore." So the word restore means, why restore? Because it has been here before. The pure language was here before, but it was lost. So God said, "I will restore it back to them." The question is, when was this pure language was lost? Then it will lead us back to Genesis 11. You know? Genesis 11, the Tower of Babel. We can go there, Genesis 11. The Tower of Babel. Genesis chapter 11. He said, "And the whole earth was of one language and of one speech." And it came to pass as they journeyed from the east that they found a plain in the land of Shinar, and they dwelt there. And they said one to another, "Go to, let us make brick and burn them truly." And they had brick for stone and slime had they for mortar. And they said, "Go to, let us build us a city and a tower, whose top may reach unto heaven, and let us make us a name, lest we be scattered abroad upon the face of the whole earth." And the Lord came down to see the city and the tower which the children of men builded. And the Lord said, listen to this. "Behold, the people is one, and they have all one language, and this they begin to do; and now nothing will be restrained from them which they have imagined to do." So, verse 7, he said, "Go to, let us go down and there confound their language or confuse them, that they may not understand one another's speech." So that is what happened. The pure language was lost. But God said, "I will restore it back to the people, a pure language." So many Bible teachers, scholars says that this is a prophecy of the give of tongues that come in the day of Pentecost. But also maybe it's a prophecy of the millennium in the kingdom, the millennium that God will restore the pure language in the millennium. Some people said it was Hebrew. Hebrew is a pure language. Maybe, or maybe not, we don't know. We cannot be sure. We just can speculate. It could be. Alright? Because one of the reason why they said Hebrew is the pure language, because why? In Hebrew, there is no cursing words. Very interesting, kan? We never thought about that. In Malay? English? God lah. How dare you? All these four-letter words and all of that, kan? Filipino? Ada juga. Wah, banyak juga cursing word, cursing word, you know? But Hebrew no curse word. They don't know how to curse and to curse in Hebrew. If they want to curse you and to... They need to speak in English. Baru ada. Hebrew ta ada. Very interesting, kan? Very interesting, kan? Yeah. I found that because I read the commentary and all that. So I found it like that. Oh yeah, it's really true. So it could be the pure language. But in the day of Pentecost, this thing happened. And Zephaniah 3:9 was fulfilled. Tongues. It's a pure language God restored to His people. Now, in... Pentecost. We have... I just want to finish here. Paul, there are two things here. Paul and Luke. Paul and Luke. They emphasize the work of the Holy Spirit in the life of the believer in Christ. What's the difference? Paul, he emphasized the truth of the Holy Spirit in dwelling every believer's. Alright? That is what he said. Romans 8 verse 9. He said, "If anyone does not have the Spirit of Christ, he is not Christ." Or it means, "If anyone who does not have the Spirit of Christ, he does not belong to Christ." Alright? So if you don't have the Spirit of God working in you to produce the fruit of the Holy Spirit in you, the characters of God, the nature of God in us, it means you do not belong to Christ. Even though you are a Christian, even though you go to church, even though maybe you've been a Christian for so long, but you don't carry the Spirit of Christ. Amen? We need to walk like Him, the Bible says. Alright? That's what he said. I'm finding that scripture. We need to walk like Jesus walked. Especially the fruit of the Holy Spirit being produced in the life of the believer. For you to become Christ-like. You cannot say, "I go to church, I'm a Christian and all," but the life of Christ is not manifested in you. People cannot see His life in you, His character in you. It's different. So Paul emphasized that. That the Holy Spirit indwells every believer and He's working in the life of the believer. That's why he said, "If we walk in the Spirit, let us also keep in step with the Spirit." In Galatians chapter 5. Alright? Those who are led by the Spirit, they are the sons of God. How does people recognize us to be children of God or sons of God? It's because we are led by the Spirit of God. Your life is being led by the Holy Spirit. It's no more flesh, but it's the Holy Spirit. But Luke emphasized different thing. Alright? If you read Luke 24:49. Luke mentioned this. Luke 24:49, Jesus told the disciples. He said, "Do not leave Jerusalem until you are endued with the power from on high." So Paul, he emphasized about the Spirit of God indwells the believer. But Luke emphasized that the Holy Spirit empowers the believer. That is you and I. Right? There are things that we can do for God because we are empowered. Alright? Not only empowered that we can blow on people and they fall to the ground or throw our jacket and, you know, lay hands on them and they fall to the ground. Not only that, it's much, much more than that. He give you divine ability to do things for Him. Right? Maybe you lay hands on people, people not falling down, it's okay. But you go mission, you do this thing, you do these things. You know, you build churches, you plant churches, you support churches, you witness to people. That is the power of the Holy Spirit. Alright? It's not so much on the demonstration. He said, "Some people like they wave their hands and hundreds people was thrown back." Alright? Somebody, yeah, it was Chuck Smith actually. He says, Chuck Smith. He said, "I don't care how high you jump. I don't care how crazy you dance and all." And he said, "I don't care how high you jump." You know? What I want to see is how straight you land. Some people, they jump in the church when the music and the worship, you know, so loud and all. But then they are not living straight. Right? But the power of the Holy Spirit is more than just make people to fall down on the floor. They call it slain in the spirit. I am not against it. It happened when I pray for people also, it happens. Alright? Sometimes, you know, I also sometimes, I miss that. So sometimes I just try to go and pray for people or stand next to them. I don't push them, I just touch them gently or sometimes I wave my hands around their head. Eh, it fall down. Wow, Lord, you're still here. It still works, Lord. You know? But I'm not, nowadays, I don't really go after that lah. Alright? But sometimes I just want to see it. You know, I just want to see it. Sometimes things happen like that. I say, "Wow, Holy Spirit, you're still here," you know? Long time I never see this kind of thing. But it still works, it's still here. So Holy Spirit, you're still here. You know? But it's more than that. He make us to be effective, excuse me, witness. When you share the gospel, when you invite people, when you talk to people, they are being inspired, they're being touched, they're being moved. That's the Holy Spirit. That's the empowering. Amen? Yeah. The other day, the pastors, we have pastors pray and fasting, kan? Many of them there, much, much older than me. You know, 60, 70. So I was... I take the microphone last lah because I, my voice, I receive my voice. So I was just sharing to them about IPW and all of that. So I was just encouraging them. I said, "There is no retirement in the Lord." No retirement. We keep ongoing, keep ongoing. Amen? Yeah. So I was mentioning to them some of the men of God who just passed away, like Reinhard Bonke, Billy Graham, Maurice Sirlo, Sirlo, David Paulson. Alright? Ravi Zakaria. All these people who just passed away, they are in their golden age and they still keep going, going and preaching and preaching. Alright? So I told them, I said, "This year I'll be 50. I'm not getting younger, I'm getting older. How much time we have?" I said, "Those of you who, you know, in your golden years, how much time you have? Don't quit. You need to keep ongoing. Keep on serving the Lord. You still can win soul. You still can bring people to God. You still can preach." Amen? Still can preach. It doesn't mean you retire, oh, no more preaching. No. We keep on preaching. We keep on serving the Lord. Get involved. Alright? If you stop, you quit, you will break down. So keep on serving, keep on preaching. That's why we need the Holy Spirit. We need Him. Reinhard Bonke, if you listen to his testimony after he graduate from the Bible school, he went back to his hometown. So the train stopped in one place. So he said, "Nothing to do. I better go around and see, you know, do sightseeing in the town before the train go on." So he end up in a house of this George, George Jeffrey, right? If I'm not mistaken, that the men of God, very powerful men of God, in his late years. So there's a sign in the, on the fence there. George Jeffrey's house. So he said, "Eh, is this the same man? George Jeffrey, the man of God, is this the same man that he live in this house?" So he went up there and knocked on the door. He said, "Is this the house of George Jeffrey, the man of God that God used mightily?" So that one lady came out and said, "Yes." Then Reinhard Bonke said, "Can I see him?" She said, "No." A very old man. When she said, "No," suddenly a voice came in from inside. He said, "Let him come in." So he came in. So he went there, he said, "Are you George Jeffrey?" Before he say anything, he said, "George Jeffrey laid hands on him and began to pray." And both of them were on the floor kneeling down and praying. Very powerful lah. Then after that wonderful experience, he went home, took the train and go home. His father met him at the train station to pick him up. So he went home, his father was there. Then his father told him, when the father met him at the train station, the father told him, he said, "George Jeffrey just passed away." He said, "No, cannot be. I just was with him in his house. He prayed for me." He said, "Yeah, the news came that he just passed away." So that men of God just waited for this man, young man to come. I believe he was led by the Spirit for his last ministry to lay hands on this young man, Reinhard Bonke, who became great evangelist and preached to millions of people. See? So we keep ongoing. We keep on ministering. We keep on serving. Many Christians today, they enjoy the Holy Spirit in them, which many times they don't even care. They don't even border. Alright? Even though they believe in Him. What more? They empowering. I'm looking for that. Sometimes, I also sometimes being challenged and, you know, sometimes also I feel like I'm not really being so serious about this. You know, sometimes I come across the word waiting, waiting on the Lord, you know? Sometimes I said, "I don't even, I'm not even in that level." You know? I want to do more. I want to wait on the Lord until things happen to see God really move and really anoint us and empower us. We need that today. The world is not getting better. And Christian churches are getting weaker and weaker. Many people are getting weak and weak. Christians are losing. Yeah, maybe statistically, we are still, you know, 2 billion more. Yeah? But some other religion are catching up. Alright? So what we're going to do? For Malaysia, if you see the statistic, still, Christianity is still only about what? I forgot. How many percent? I think, yeah, I forgot already. Very small. Very small. Alright? Very small. 16% I think, if I can remember. 16, 16% I think. Brother checking the Google lah. Now everybody have Google lah. Yeah. Checking the Google. Is that correct? But we need Him. We need His power. If we are a Christian and we just, you know, go to church just to enjoy the presence of God, to enjoy the preaching. As I'm Christian today, they are choosing preaching. They're looking for their preference and all of that. I mean, try to do something. Get involved in the ministry or support the ministry. That is a ministry. I preached last Sunday, giving is a ministry. If you are not in the front line, if you are not in the preaching, if you are not in the leadership, if you are not in any ministry, take giving as a ministry. You cannot do, you cannot go. Maybe you don't have the gifting, but you have the resources. You give it. You give it. And that happened in the Bible. The Philippians do that with Paul the Apostle. The Thessalonians, they did that to Paul the Apostle. Even when Paul was in prison, they were sending support to Paul the Apostle in prison. You know, Paul Apostle? He stayed two years in prison before his execution and he need to pay the rent. And that is how he survive. The Philippians, the Thessalonians was supporting him, even sending the support to the prison. Group of ladies were following Jesus. And the Bible says, "They support Jesus." They are the one who supported Jesus. Giving is a ministry. So be involved with something. Be involved, keep going, keep going. Be involved with something. But this is what the Holy Spirit will do. He dwells in us and He empowers us. Like Jesus was born in the Spirit. He was, He grew in the Spirit. He was filled with the Spirit. He ministered in the Spirit. He died with the Spirit. He was raised by the Spirit. He was taken up to heaven by the Spirit. We also can experience that. We may be born of the Spirit. We grow in the Spirit. We are filled with the Holy Spirit. We minister in the Spirit. We die with the Spirit and be raised by the Spirit and will be taken up by the Spirit of God. And this is what we are. Amen? Amen. Wow. I'm tempted to preach more, but time is my enemy. Of course, the devil is our enemy, but time is my enemy. But I want to end here. I want to keep you long. But I pray for those in the Zoom also that the Lord will speak to you. Keep ongoing. Be empowered by the Spirit. Be, experience the Pentecost experience. Believe that He is there with you. Believe that He is using you. You know, sometimes, you know, human being, I do have that question. Sometimes I travel, sometimes I preach. I say, "Lord, are you here? Lord, are you here?" You know? Before I go up preaching, I said, "Lord, be here. Are you here?" But sometimes I just hear this voice. You know, the Lord speak to me. Just trust me. I'm here. Trust me. You just need to believe it. You know, when, when, when we read the book of Acts, Acts chapter 28, you remember Paul supposed to go to Rome with a ship and they experienced shipwreck. And then they end up in an island called Malta or Melita. Malta. Yeah, were they in the island? Then, when they were in the island, Paul was beaten by a serpent and they thought he will fall down dead. Alright? But he shook up the serpent and then they changed their mind. Eh, he did not die. He must be a God. He must be a God. You know? But this is another thing. And there was the chipmunk there called Publius. And his father was sick. You know? And the Bible says, "Paul went to him..." Listen to this word. You can read that, Acts chapter 28. "Paul went to the father of Publius." And the Bible says, "And he healed him." When I read that, I always remember this word.[1784.88] Paul healed him. And after that, many of the villagers also came and Paul laid hands and prayed for them and they got healed. But that word really stick to me. He healed him. So then I was reading that. Why did Paul, why did Paul did that? He healed him. Why not Jesus healed him? Oh, Paul prayed for them, prayed for him and the Lord healed him. But the Bible says, "He healed him." Paul is the one who healed him. Something I understand here. It means Paul really understood and he really knew when he encountered Jesus on the road of Damascus, when Ananias prayed for him and he was filled with the Holy Spirit. Paul knew that the Holy Spirit is with him. The power of God was with him. That's why he can do it. He can heal Publius' father because Paul knew that it is in him. If we understand that, that will change our ministry. That will change our Christian life. If you really knew that you are filled, empowered, He is there, He is with you. You just need to believe Him, you just need to do it. He's there. He's there. Why we don't see it? Because we are not doing anything. Try to start doing. When you see your family sick, pray for them. Your friends sick, pray for them. Got people problem, pray for them. You just pray. Don't care about the outcome. It is God's business, not your business. You just need to believe it. See, just pray, just speak the word. Pray, share, preach, witness, do all of these things. Then you will see God moving and working in your life. Because He's there. He's there. Alright? That is the word dynamism, alright? It's like a dynamo, He can generate that power. The dynamo can generate that power, that electricity, that, you know? If the dynamo is in motion, it working. But if the dynamo is not in motion and working, it just a dynamo is dead, nothing there. But when it runs, it means it keep on going, the power is there. It's the same with the Holy Spirit in us. That's why to me, I have no choice, I have to go out sometimes. Alright? I travel, that is one of the purpose why I travel. Why I go and preach here and there? Why? Because I want, I wanted to be in working. I don't want to keep it there, you know? If people here are not hungry, I will go somewhere. Find people who are hungry to see the demonstration of the Holy Spirit. Alright? So you cannot, you say, "Oh, you know, just stay here. If we stay here, then we will die, we become dry. We don't see anything moving." So that's the reason why I travel sometimes, you know? Sometimes I tell my friends, you know, "I need to do this lah," you know? Because it's there, you know? You cannot, you cannot make it to lay dormant. You need to make it work to be activated. He is there, the Holy Spirit is there. He is with you, but you need to experience that empowering. Say, "Amen." Hallelujah, amen. Okay, enough for tonight, let's all stand. We want to pray. Thank you, Jesus. You know, sometimes preaching is not only preaching, but it's a building. Building. Sometimes I stay in the preaching because why? I want to build the atmosphere. It's the same thing like worship. It's same. Worship, sometimes we stay in one chorus, we stay in one song. Why? Because we build. We are building. I don't sing just for the sake of singing. I hope and pray that all worship leader will understand this and all preacher will understand this. In the preaching, you are building. I learned this many, many years ago. I thank God for some friends who know things in the Spirit. So while I was preaching, they were encouraging me. So it really builds in me. It's building. Alright? Can you help me with some music? Thank you, Jesus. If you need prayer personally, you can, you can come forward and just, yeah, I pray for you quickly, alright? If not, we can pray general prayer because the Lord is, is here. He is here. Amen? Amen. Let's lift our hands and just bless the Lord. Thank you, Jesus. We give you praise, Lord. We give you praise. Thank you, Holy Spirit. You came to dwell in your church, in the believer's heart, in our hearts. And you come upon your people to empower. I thank you, Holy Spirit. Tonight, I pray that as we lift our hands, you come, Lord. Come, Holy Spirit. Thank you so much. We pray for Mr. Wong in the name of Jesus. You just lift your hands. I thank you for your healing. Lord, I pray, whatever he go through, Lord, by the power of your Holy Spirit, I declare him today totally healed. Lord, you will touch his digestive system, his stomach, his intestines. Lord, all these parts, all this system. We command this to become normal in the name of Jesus. Pray for healing and restoration. Remove every discomfort in Jesus' name. Holy Spirit, I thank you for this. Thank you for this healing. Thank you, Holy Spirit, for your power. In Jesus' name. We lose him right now in the name of Jesus. And Lord, I pray that he receive this healing and health. Thank you for that. We bind every work of the enemy. We bind every work of the enemy. We bind sicknesses. We bind diseases in Jesus' name. Thank you, Lord. We want to believe this together in Jesus' name. Amen? Amen. Hallelujah! Let's lift our hands to Jesus and just say, "Lord, I need you. Holy Spirit, I need you. Holy Spirit, I need your power. I need your anointing. Lord, I pray that you will fill us and baptize us with the Holy Spirit. Lord, to make us effective witnesses for Jesus. I pray that all of us, Lord, will get involved in witnessing. When we witness to people, when we share your gospel, they will be touched by your Holy Spirit, they'll be touched by your power. They'll be convicted of sin, they will trust Jesus, they will receive Jesus in their heart. They will be delivered from every bondage. They will be set free from every sin. In Jesus' name. I pray, Lord, that when we lay hands on the sick, they shall be healed, they shall be recovered. In Jesus' name. We will see healings and deliverance. We will see, Father, in Jesus' name, your miracles, your healing. Because we are filled with your Holy Spirit. We are empowered by the Holy Spirit. We lift our hands to you to receive you, Holy Spirit. Right now, we receive you, Holy Spirit. Right now, in Jesus' name. We also pray that you will come down upon your church. Lord, fill your church with the Holy Spirit. Touch every members, make them to become alive in the name of Jesus. Revive them, Lord, in Jesus' name. Fill this church with the presence of God that when we have visitors come, they will be touched by the love of God. They be touched by the power of God. In Jesus' name. We pray that the power of the Holy Spirit will spread around our area, the housing area, Lord, our neighbors, in Jesus' name. They will be touched by the Holy Spirit. They be convicted and they have a longing to come to church in Jesus' mighty name. Thank you so much, Holy Spirit. We welcome you, we give you the freedom to move in our life. We give you our hearts, we give you our life, Holy Spirit. Thank you for the presence of God tonight. Thank you. Thank you for your word. Thank you, Holy Spirit. We bless you. Thank you for this, we give you all the glory and praise. Thank you for your people, Lord, here. Thank you for those in the Zoom. Thank you. You bless them, use them mightily, we pray. Thank you, blessed Holy Spirit. We give you praise and glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen and amen. Hallelujah! Amen. Okay. We pray, Lord, for Mrs. Wong as she stand in proxy for May. Yeah, we believe a miracle to happen in May's life. You will touch her mind, you will touch her soul. You will put everything right in Jesus' name. Lord, Lord, we speak for your divine will in her life. Because when she was created, when you created her according to Psalm 139, that you created her fearfully and wonderfully, perfectly. When she was born into this world, she was born perfectly. And we want to speak your perfect will and design in her life. Tonight, we pray that you will speak into her heart. You will work deeply in her heart. While she was, she is sleeping, do a work in her life. While she stay in that place, Lord, during the prayer, the worship, the word, the preaching of your word, all those spiritual activities will speak to her life in Jesus' name. Pray for restoration. We pray for the good Spirit of God to come upon her. You will transform her, you will change her in Jesus' name. Pray, Lord, that you will loose her from the grip of the enemy. Lord, we rebuke Satan, we rebuke all his work over her life, all these years. Lord, deliver her, set her free in Jesus' name totally. Set her free from the grip of the enemy and make her to become a new person in you. Lord, hear us when we pray this prayer tonight. Hear us, Lord, in Jesus' name. And let miracle happen in her life. Let miracle happen in her life. We thank you for this and we promise to give you all the glory and the praise in Jesus' name. Amen? Amen. Yes, we believe that. Amen. Amen. Wonderful. Praise God. Yeah, tomorrow, Sunday, as usual, if you are here, you can join us. Alright? Thank you so much, I really appreciate your coming, your time. Thank you so much for being a part of us, alright? Let us build together, alright? So God bless you. Thank you and have a good night, rest tonight. Amen. Amen. Thank you for being here.